Okay, good afternoon. We will be conducting today's meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom to allow council staff and public to social distance. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting today on Zoom or online through the city's YouTube channel. If you would like to participate in live public comment via the Zoom platform, please refer to the agenda for instructions. And Mayor Andriata will begin the meeting momentarily. And Mayor, I do see that Evan is on the meeting now.
Great, thanks. All right, I'm gonna wait until it's four o'clock straight up and then I'll start.
If I go on mute just because the leaf blower right outside the window here.
Yeah, that's okay. I think we do that anyway with the pledge on Zoom. It gets kind of echoey. Okay, it's four o'clock. So I'm welcome everybody to the February 14th, 2022 State Council Workshop Session Meeting. And Happy Valentine's Day. I call this meeting to order at four o'clock PM. Ms. Gallin, may I have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Joyner?
Here.
Councilmember Carl Skent?
Present.
Councilmember Lawrenceon?
Here.
Councilmember Silhaj?
Here, but in transit, so my camera will be off for like a half hour.
Thank you. And Mayor Andriata?
I'm here. Thank you. Okay, I have asked Captain Evan Faddis if he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and he has so agreed. So Captain Faddis, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yeah, my pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. That was wonderful. All right, item number three, public comment. Ms. Gallin, do we have any public comment that is not on our agendas today?
So I do have a couple of folks attending, but it doesn't look like they have their hands raised, Mayor.
Okay.
No publicum.
Okay, great, awesome. Okay, so let's go to our first item 4A. And this is a revisit council discussion regarding AB 361. To continue with public meetings in a virtual setting due to the spread and risk relative to Omicron variant of COVID-19 to allow for continued video conferencing of public meetings. Ms. Malinkoff, can you give us a brief update, please?
You, Mayor. So it will be a very brief update because there is not a lot of significant information since we met together on February 8th to talk about this. The county updated its COVID dashboard the day after on February 9th. It does continue to show declining trends as far as new cases. And then we did receive some Biobot information from our wastewater treatment plant, which similarly is showing a decline such that we anticipate within the next week or so probably being back to transmission rates that were akin to what we saw last summer. So that's pretty much all that we have. And as you know, the governor's indoor mask mandate is going to be allowed to expire tomorrow.
Yeah, that's great news. Okay, thank you. All right, so let's just go around and see if the council has any comments or concerns about going back to public meetings on February 22nd and all of our commissions and committees. So I don't know if Alyssa can talk right now, but we'll start with Mayor Protem Joyner. Do you have any comments or concerns?
No concerns. At this point, I think I'm inclined to simply let things expire and go back to in-person meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I was gonna say I agree with Paul with the one caveat that we talked about last week, allowing whatever commissions are already noted to proceed as noted this week. And then future forward in person.
Yes, okay. Yeah, I got that. Thank you. Councilmember Carlos Skent?
I agree with one of my colleagues.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lawrenceon?
I agree with my colleagues also.
All right, that's an easy conversation because I agree too. And Alyssa's right, we did talk about allowing, because I think Planning Commission is tomorrow, no, Wednesday, right? And whatever.
Independent redistricting is tomorrow.
Oh, okay, okay. So redistricted tomorrow, Planning Commission is Wednesday, and whatever is scheduled right now, but we'll come back in person for council meeting and then everything after that on February 22nd. Is that correct?
Correct. The direction we have is that the resolution that extended AB 361 findings are now withdrawing that state of emergency attendant to those findings.
Yes, okay.
So I guess my one quest follow-up question will be, will the council chamber be ready? Will those issues be resolved?
The technology issue should be resolved.
Well, the TV is in the office. It just has to be installed.
Yeah, Gwen, maybe you can share because actually just the other night Gwen and Jennifer were testing the new system, so.
Awesome.
Yes, the audio issues have been resolved. We are still working to get trained in-house, but the next meeting should be perfect.
Oh, find wood really quick. Start knocking on it.
Gwen, I really appreciate you and Jen and all, everybody that has worked so hard on this. I mean, we fully understand that, you know, Echo and all that stuff, none of that was, you know, that was all stuff that out of everybody's control. But you guys have worked really, really hard to get it to normal so that the public can participate well, that we can hear, we can participate well. And I really, really appreciate your persistence and getting that taken care of for us.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Okay, so.
It's easy when the new city manager says, I don't care what it costs, get it done.
Right. Love it. All right, so anything else on this? Oh, public comment, sorry. Do we have any public comment on AB 361 and going back into person on February 22nd? And allowing whatever is scheduled right now to stay virtual until then. Any public comment?
Mayor, I don't have any hands raised.
And Mayor, just for clarification on the record, I understand we're going to continue with the hybrid format so that the public can continue to join in to participate remotely, but that we will also be allowing members of the public to attend in person.
Hundred percent, yeah. That's the whole conversation about the Zoom and the Echo. Yeah, so you are. Yeah, yeah, no, 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 that, yeah, thank you. No, that was, I appreciate that clarification because I didn't say that, but you are correct, yes.
The hybrid formula does not allow council to attend.
It's not council, it's just public, just the public, yes. And again, very much appreciated because I know there's a lot of residents who, you know, who used to come in person that really can't anymore and they really enjoy the Zoom and it keeps them able to participate. So, all right, so staff has direction and we're good on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, guys. All right, item 4B, council discussion of priorities, strategies, and desired outcomes for the use of the American Rescue Plan Act revenue received by the City of Lincoln. So I'm gonna let our city manager, Sean Scully, give us a brief update and then we can talk about it.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and good evening, council. So I'm going to just real briefly give a little bit of ARPA background, just in case there's people from the public that aren't really familiar with it. And then I'm gonna get out of the way and let you all battle it out about how this money should be spent. But just in case you don't know, the funding package, the American Rescue Plan was rolled out roughly $1.9 trillion. About $65 billion of that was allocated to every single city, town, or village across the country. Lincoln's has been allocated approximately $11.5 million. And in a funny way, I know that since ARPA has come in, there's been a lot of ideas and how should it be used? But not making a decision on that has inadvertently been a very good strategy move for the council because the first few rounds of what they call interim final rules, which is basically the Treasury Department's rules about how you can spend this funding and how it should be accounted for have become less restrictive in a very important way. You may recall the back during the last bailout package that was passed earlier on in COVID, that money was directly allocated to the city and it was very broad what you could do with it. This round was quite a bit more restricted, though still quite a few options. But what happened just very recently was the Department of Treasury issued their final rule. So clarified and refined a set of criteria, and this is it for now at least. And the most important component of that was there was a bunch of discussion from cities across the country about how you backfill lost revenue because the concept is what would you have received had COVID not wreaked havoc on the country? And they had sort of a complicated calculator on their website and a set of methodology basically about how a finance professional could calculate what a city lost, and I'm using air quotes. And that's really difficult to do, and it's really difficult when in the, you know, last six to 10 months, we've had a really aggressive and strong economy, which has been represented in our revenue figures. So of course, it was really great news to find out that the Treasury has basically said that a city may choose to simply claim $10 million of loss with no documentation. It's a blanket $10 million. You can essentially absorb that into your general fund or into a subaccount of your general fund. And in a sense, de-federalize those dollars, which allows you to spend it. You know, some communities will use it truly as reserve to help backfill revenues. Other cities will, you know, put it into a variety of different programs. It really opens up the full gamut of what you could do. Basically, what I understand from experts I've talked to about this is you can use it on anything you would use your general fund for. So with that said, of our 11.5, if the council were to choose to do that, that would basically put $10 million into your, we create a separate account and we'll track it. One other little component that Councilmember Prosket mentioned to me last week, which I did hunt down today and I'm still confirming, I believe that if you, if the $10 million is the assumed loss the city council agrees to, that eliminates the timeline for spending. So you, because if you think about it, what you're really saying is this is lost revenues and we're simply just riding our ship. So you really could be strategic about how you want to use it, and I'll absolutely verify that. If I'm wrong about that, it means that we have a couple of years where we're gonna need to get this money allocated and spent. So, okay, all that to say that you could, I just threw in some ideas just to start the conversation, but you could, there've been discussion about business grants and nonprofit support. There's been talks about this concept of like essentially creating our own grant program to hire firefighters and public safety staff. You can make capital infrastructure investments. You can support other governmental activities. There are, this is something we'd have to deal with in the labor discussions, but certainly there are allowances to do one-time essential worker bonuses, which a lot of communities are doing for the folks that worked during the pandemic. And then certainly any other creative idea that council would like to direct. The only request that I have is even if you don't need to divvy up the 10 million tonight, but if you have two or three ideas and general numbers of what you'd like to allocate it towards, that gives me more than enough direction to really get those rolling. And we're gonna have to continue to refine this plan over and over again because, you know, this is a really rare opportunity to do a lot of good. And so anyway, that's all I have to say. And also, one last thing, the 1.5 million that remains in ARPA will have separate recommendations for you about how to spend that since that is constrained by those rules. But I think the simplest answer to that is some sort of small-scale capital project in water or sewer because the bill specifically states that it can go towards those uses. But yeah, so that's the presentation. And then I'm gonna be feverishly typing notes as you talk so that I can try to get all the direction we need.
Okay, thank you, Sean. I really appreciate that. So you kind of answered the one question I had to start off with, the 1.5 restricted. I was gonna ask you where, kind of where that has to be set aside, but you answered that. So we're probably looking at some kind of, I thought I was thinking that some kind of sewer project or a water project, or it's something along those lines that we have to use it for.
Yeah, I think our recommendation would be that we try to pick an area of town that maybe has old, real old lines that we really have a tough time funding otherwise. And so that's an opportunity to do that.
Okay, and just for my information.
Just to interject, though.
Go ahead.
Can you, I'm sorry. It doesn't have to be, can you hear me? It doesn't have to be just on capital infrastructure, though. That bill sets out a bunch of different areas that we could use it. So capital infrastructure would be one of the most, you know, safest easiest, but there are also, you could do things that have to do with public safety directly related to COVID. You can do homelessness, triaging. You can do, trying to think off the top of my head. There's a whole list of items that also, mental health services that have a nexus to COVID. There's a whole lot of flexibility. You could do small business grants that have a direct nexus to COVID losses. So there's a whole bunch of wiggle room and that is like additional like million, right? Like one.
One and a half.
1.5 million, yeah. So that's actually a decent amount where we could put it towards infrastructure or we could put better parts towards infrastructure and we have wiggle room to put it towards other essential projects.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that. So I don't know if there's a nexus to COVID, but if we can use it for infrastructure or capital improvement, can it be used for roads? I'm not saying I want to, I'm just asking. No, okay.
No.
It was specific to water wastewater.
Water wastewater, okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify on that.
It's because it was, it was before the infrastructure package talks came out, and so they were wanting to find a way to help cities be able to handle those issues with COVID. That's the only reason why I said that way.
Right, okay, thank you. That's what I was thinking. I wanted to make sure because I'm sure that we might get questions about that.
Let's explore that a little farther if we can. What if the water and sewer lines go right down the middle of the street?
Well, yeah.
Break the street to get to the water and sewer lines.
Well, but we could potentially use that 1.5 million for the water wastewater and we could use the unrestricted 10 million to heal the sprees because we do have the flexibility on those extra 10 million. They didn't care about the street being busted open.
Yeah, I mean, if you're saw cutting the street, part of the water project is replacing it. So you could, I mean, that's okay. What I think is not okay is if you were resurfacing, you know, whole blocks.
Okay, that makes perfect sense. Okay, all right, all right. So Mayor Protem Joyner, we'll start with you. Go ahead.
Actually, I need, the doorbell just rang and there's nobody here. I need you to go check that. I'll get back.
Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Carlos Skent. Go ahead, Dan.
Well, first, I think it's extremely important that we have the answer, the final answer to the question about, is it, you commit the money to a fund? And because I don't know if people realize the subtlety, is all of a sudden you have moved that money from one-time money to sustainable money. Because you could go out five years, 10 years, and have the spending plan to spend that money. And in fact, one of the things that we talked about with the grant, the backfill and getting fire up to speed faster using the tax. And that was, it's a hell of a lot different with a two-year timeline on it than it is with an eight-year timeline, which is what we have in the whole project. So I, what other, there's some questions that, oh, how's the plan? First of all, is this like the ARPA? Where you had to have a plan for expenditures? And so my questions are, do we still have to have a plan? How tightly are you held to the plan? And how do you have to report the plan?
Okay, so for the, the answer to your questions are yes, yes, and don't know, the last part. But, but here's, so two things. First off, the confines under which we're operating really mostly apply to the 1.5 million. Once the, I still, you know, to be honest with you, I do not have clarity. And I've searched everywhere and asked lots of questions about whether or not a formal process is needed for council to determine, okay, we're claiming the 10 million. I think we will probably just do that in a vote to be really clear, just so it's part of the record.
I don't think we have any problem with that.
Yeah, but to your point is that the $1.5 million component, yes, will need to have a plan. It needs to be well documented. We're gonna have to, yeah, yeah.
So if it's okay with everybody, I know we, and it's fine if you don't want to, but while we, while Sean works on getting more information about the 1.5, you know, the timing and all of that, can we set that aside for right now? We just know that we have $10 million to work with and then we'll get those details, yeah. And then, so really kind of what we want to focus on right now is how much do we want to set aside for business and nonprofit grants? And then we can talk about funding the fire. And then if we have time to talk about any other ideas or you want to throw them out there, let's do that. But let's tackle those two things first, if that's okay with everybody. If it's not, that's fine. You can yell out your ideas or whatever. But we got the 1.5 set aside. Sean's gonna give us details on that. Let's talk about business and nonprofit and fire. And then if you have other ideas.
My only comment on that is if we could overlay it, because we have had some really robust conversations about council's desire for how these funds could be spent. And the last time we had a workshop, we all agreed, or at least like provisionally agreed, that it should be like 80% infrastructure and then the remainder towards other projects. And so I'm, I personally am totally comfortable with focusing on business, nonprofit, and the safer grant idea. But I'd like it to be under that overlay of like, what percentage are we talking about? Have we changed our minds as a council that it's no longer that heavy of an emphasis on infrastructure or are we talking that 20% remainder and how we're gonna spend that?
Well, I, oh, go ahead, Dan. Sorry, go ahead, Dan, I'm sorry.
I was kind of assuming that we had decided that 20% was the set aside for business and nonprofits.
That was my understanding also.
So the, so 2 million out of the 10 goes to that priority, which is in line with our general priorities, which are public safety and the operation of the city. Is, you know, keeping things running is the most important thing. And everything else is secondary. So I, I just, I guess I'd have to rethink if we're gonna redo the, forgetting whether it's 10 million or 8 million or whatever. We said that 20% of the expendable funds that we have is, would go to the nonprofits and to businesses. Businesses are a much higher priority than nonprofits. And the rest of it is to be spent in the best way at the city. We talked infrastructure because at the time, that was the only thing you could spend a damn money on. Now that we're no longer tied to infrastructure on the 80%, that we have much more flexibility, which is great. But I still don't think it, anything has changed the 80/20 split, in my opinion.
Well, the only thing that's changed, and it could, it could adjust that percentage a little bit. The only thing that's changed is that now we know we didn't get the safer grant. And so we were waiting for that before and we couldn't spend it before, but now we can on public safety. So I'm not saying it does change the percentage, but I'm saying that has, that we have that knowledge now or we didn't have it before.
We've got a better, you're saying we have a better target to spend our 80% on than we did originally.
Well, yeah.
My understanding, though, would be that if we were moved forward with that safer grant, that that would, I was looking at it as that would come out of that 80% set aside for like essential city services.
Yes.
And that that wouldn't touch the 20% for community services.
That's exactly right. And that's my.
That's what I was wanting clarity on. So we're still talking 80/20 split, but the safer portion of it isn't out of the 20%.
I think that's correct, yes. I mean, unless somebody has an argument against it. Paul, you have a look on your face. Did you want to say something?
Well, part of that look might have been that I'm trying to, didn't quite hear Alyssa fully. No, it's, I, I think that what happens for me is I start to drill down when we throw out 20% for business and nonprofits. What is the actual need there? And what happens if we wind up down the road? Obviously, if there's money available, these groups are gonna rush in to try to get as much of it as they can. But what, but what's the actual need? And what do we do in the eventuality that it is not fully expended over time? Do we want to just start handing this out?
Yeah, no, I.
Push it out into the public, I guess, is what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, so we can, we can definitely have that conversation. I mean, Alyssa's jogging my memory about the 80/20, but it may be that our business community doesn't need $2 million, right? They might.
No, but they'd use it. That's the thing, they'd absolutely use it.
But that's your point, and I'm agreeing with your point, is that just because they would use it doesn't necessarily mean that they need that much. They might, but they might not. So that's something we have to talk through. Go ahead, Dan.
Well, but also, Paul, oh, sorry, Dan.
No, go ahead.
What I was gonna say is, we have much more flexibility in how we structure that now, now that that 10 million can be absorbed as general fund backfill. My understanding is that there isn't a timeline on when those funds have to be expended because we are basically paying ourselves. And what we do with that is what we do with that. They're now general fund money. So we could set aside the 2 million, and it doesn't have to be just for business. In my mind, which I've said the whole time, I would really, really, really like to see us do something in the mental health space for our families and our residents. People, students in particular, have been hit very, very hard by all of the COVID protocols over the last two years. And I would love to be able to do something that funds a grant program or support for that. And that would be the, out of the business nonprofit section. But we don't have to say, here's $2 million, let's spend it in the first year. We could say, here's 20% we've set aside. We're willing to create a grant program of XYZ under this timeframe, and then we'll come back. And maybe there'll be a second tranche coming out based on community need and we can, we can structure it as we go. We have much more flexibility than we did before.
Right, and I understand that and don't disagree with it, but I don't forget that the county has a big chunk of money too. And they have Health and Human Services and the Lighthouse is their organization for the most part. So what would that look like if the city were to try to set something up like this? And go ahead, Dan, you look, yeah, I see your hand up.
Well, Alyssa said some of it. You set the $2 million aside. You set up, you don't hand the money out woolly-nilly. You decide what we want to do with, how we want to support a business. You put constraints on the grants, if that's what we do. And then if the people have a need to fill, they apply for the grant and they get it. If, and the split between businesses and
nonprofits.
Nonprofits. You know, that's another split that we make as prioritizations. We, we. Um, we, we, there is money for the business community also from the county and from the state. In each case, we are supplementing something that is best in particular for the city of Lincoln. If you set aside that two million dollars to help businesses and you put a grant program out and you get two companies that accept the, that need, that have the need and accept the grant and fills out, fill out the paperwork. The excess money can still be held, help, still be used to support the businesses by some sort of other program. Whether it be funding the dow- rewrite of the downtown plan, doing a zoning plan, all of the things that we have said over the past years could help the business community. Uh, what we are deciding tonight, I think for Sean is we have windfall, pardon me, we have hard earned revenue replacement.
Max money.
Uh, that, how do we, what's the importance of spending it from a council desire standpoint? So I, you know, I kind of okay with we say we, we have the two million dollar pot, twenty percent that we're setting aside to support businesses and nonprofits. I don't think we have to define a you know, it gets back then to how, how does it have to be spent and how fast is it does? But based on our conversation today, that's the decision that we make today. We have the eighty percent. But there's a whole bunch of of creative ways that I can think of spending that, because it's just general fund money.
So, so I think when, in a minute, when, when we get through rounds of talking and we let the public talk, I think Tom and Dreary can shed some light because he already has um, kind of a program uh, application for businesses that that we can, just because it, he already has it and it's worked well in the past. And if we agree with it, then we can go ahead and use that and and Tom is gonna help us uh, facilitate that if the council agrees with that. Um, and so I think it might take us a little bit more time to identify nonprofits and mental health and all of that. But I think we probably don't want to wait too long on deciding how much we want to allocate for businesses and then get going with the application because they, they really need it. They're, they're hurting. And I agree with Alyssa, the mental health um, part is important too, but Tom already has the application and all of that um, ready, ready to go. And we can let him s- speak on that in in just a little bit. Um.
So here's where I think I'm still stuck.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
We have not done a needs analysis.
Right.
We're, we're just generally saying, I would feel good about this percentage going to that.
Right.
But we're not really taking a hard look at the needs.
Would it be?
And trying to address those.
Would it be appropriate right now to have Tom get on and and kind of share that? So we kind of have an idea and what?
I don't know that he's done a needs assessment either. He's got a program put together, correct?
Well, but he's got a pulse of the businesses. So you're right, and we can do that, but what was that, Alyssa?
I, to Paul's point, it's not the same thing. I do think that, I don't have a problem with saying eighty twenty, here's our initial idea split, and then putting a need assessment out to see if that twenty percent is overblown or not. Um, just to give us a ballpark and staff a ballpark on what we're working for. But I would agree with Paul that if we're going to expend one-time monies that we will never have again, um, we probably want to make sure that we're putting it to where the most need is, and we would need to do some sort of like community pulse needs assessment outreach for that. The one other point um, that I wanted to make also is you said, let's put aside that one point five million and only talk about the ten. Except for that, I don't think we want to actually do that because the business program would be in line with that one point five million. I don't know that we want to do the safer program under that one point five million, even though it's in line with it, unless the timelines have changed. Because we want the longer timeline for the program that we're doing. Um, but that ten million that we get to absorb, that's where the flexibility comes in. That's where we could say, hey, we want to fix this pipeline, or we want to fund a general plan revision, or we want to find a downtown master plan. That, that is the only place that those dollars can be that flexible and are not held under the upper rules. And so we want to save as much of that money as possible. So to the extent that we can use the one point five towards programs like this, which are one hundred percent under the program or should be, um, it would save us significant dollars to put towards projects that we are constantly telling people, well, we don't have the money to do that for. So that would be my only other um, thought that popped into my head.
Uh, Mayor, um, just one point to counsel over Solheim's point. Um, it should just be really clear that um, if we fund even in part the small business or business grant program out of the one point five restricted funds, that that would create a situation where the grant will need to be very, very narrow and targeted and like literally related to like things like PPE and, you know, COVID related stuff and not met, not nearly as flexible. Uh, which I think was the point that that a few of you had made, but I just want to be clear about that part.
Yeah.
It would have to be tied to COVID loss. Um, but maybe we do, maybe we do two, two different ones. I'm gonna log off and log back on. I'm finally home. So give me a few minutes and you'll see me again.
Okay, thanks.
Good, let's decide.
Let's throw it to Bill.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Bill, what, what do you, what do you like to say, Bill?
Well, we, you know, uh, from what I hear, we have two different funds. We have the ten million dollars is unrestricted and the one point five, which is restricted, and we have to use that for something related to COVID. Now, the ten million, if it's unrestricted, we don't have to spend it within two years. We could possibly use that for things like uh, you know, public safety or something like that. Um, uh, you know, as, as, as a, a bridge until we get to a point where we can get more money uh, from uh, tax revenue. And probably we should, we really, and I really feel we, we really need to be a bit more uh, aggressive with the counting and getting our fair share. So, yeah, we could use that money. The one point five, yeah, that's gonna be, that, that is restricted. And I, mental health and uh, it could be one thing, you could, you could certainly tie that to uh, COVID. And um, homeless, you can tie that to whole, uh, probably COVID. So, you know, it, it just depends. And you know, tw- kind of carving out twenty percent of the ten million. You know, if, if, if there's a need for it.
Yeah, I um, I was thinking that the share to nonprofits was a much smaller share of dollars of the two million.
That's what my thought was.
It's like ninety, ten.
Yes.
My mind.
Yes.
Yeah, the rest is business oriented. Doesn't necessarily mean grants to business. It's, it's the, and and that, and that needs, that's where you need to do the needs assessment. You know, um, but we, we need, also need to hear from Tom.
Yeah.
I, you know, the, in my mind, theoretically, we could take a million dollars. One of the, one of the problems with one-time monies uh, historically, is you buy some capital equipment. You don't hire people because that, you don't do that, but you buy a piece of capital equipment. And then, two years later, you find out you don't have the budget to maintain it. Okay, I mean, that's a very typical, we built fire stations. We bought fire trucks. They sat there empty because we didn't have the people to man them. Okay, um, it's the same with a lot of the you know, buy radios and all of a sudden you, you can't afford to maintain them. My, one of the things running in my mind is that you could buy capital, whatever, and fund an endowment with this same money, I mean, with money. So you don't have, you take the, you take that maintenance and operations thing out of the picture. That's a far stretch. You know, but it's just an expansion of, of using the money over eight years to do something else, or five years. So, um, I, I think that there's potentially a lot of opportunity to be very creative to really get more leverage out of that ten million dollars than just spending ten million dollars. So, I'm just still in time to Alyssa, got her.
Thanks, she's here. So, if, if nobody, if, if nobody objects, um, so we can, you know, uh, move the conversation along about the business, can, can uh, we have Tom kind of share what his thoughts are and and uh, where he kind of, what he thinks the needs are maybe. And then we can kind of decide where we want to go for that and then move on to the, the fire discussion. Tom, are you available?
Yeah, can, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, I'm in the kitchen in the chamber. My internet's not working very well, so I'm on my phone. Um, no, I appreciate the conversation. You know, we've been, Mark Scott and I have been doing this for about five months and going back and forth. We did do a survey um, about three to four months ago. And I, I can, because of the Brown Act, I didn't want to send it all to you guys, but um, I can send that to Sean like I sent to Mark. And um, the survey, I believe, and I wish I had it written in front of me. I have every, I got three hundred pages here, but I forgot the survey. But the survey pretty much went out to DLA and uh, chamber members. And I think we had about sixty respond, I think, sixty, seventy responses. Majority of the responses, this is what Mark Scott was looking for, was uh, the number one issue right now was uh, revenue, loss of revenue, they exhausted their savings. They're trying to, uh, besides having staffing issues, but trying to, uh, you know, so afford their employees, uh, employee retention. Um, some were talking about doing capital improvements. Um, you know, I know several restaurants in town that want to add a patio and, you know, is there any kind of matching grant program, matching funds they can do possibly with that? That was one idea. Um, but, but the survey really just showed that most of the people were still hurting financially. And a couple, well, la- last month, I think I called Holly and, and Mark and said, you know, we just had the nursery closed down for two weeks. We just had month cellar. We had PJs over here shut down. You know, they're still hurting, you know, and we're kind of numb to the fact that, you know, two years ago, we, we didn't know what to do. We wanted to help everybody. And the county stepped up with that sixteen million and really did help some. But uh, now we see a business closed due to COVID or uh, and staffing issues. We just kind of, you know, uh, we feel bad, but we're not taking action. And that's what I really paid attention to the last month or so. And it's really uh, this makes me nervous because there are, some of the businesses are really struggling. They exhausted all their, all their capital and they're just hanging on. And now with the staffing issue, that's just exacerbating everything. But um, but I can get you a copy of that survey and we could re- rephrase those questions to do a needs assessment like Paul's talking about. Um, again, we, we kind of did that, but we can, I can get it to a few of you and then you guys can figure out how to um, at least look at the one we did. Uh, that's number one. Um, again, being very creative, I've been working with Elk Grove, Rachel Brown. She's the Economic Development Manager. And Elk Grove, the city council approved a four million dollar business and nonprofit grant program. Of that four million dollars, they were only able to hand out, uh, grant out one point two million because of the application process and the criteria was so stringent that they, they were only able to give out one point two million. So Rachel brought it back to city council last, or two weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, I have it right in front of me here. Um, where the council redlined a lot of their stuff and now they streamlined it into a one-page application, basically asking about their revenue losses in two thousand twenty um, from two thousand twen- uh, nineteen, really simplified it. But I agree with you that I think we should be creative and not just get, hand this money out. And doing another needs assessment is a definite. Um, on the nonprofit side of things, I've been working with the Lincoln Community Foundation because they, they kind of have the, the pulse on who really needs stuff, uh, you know, help. Um, but I like Alyssa's idea about working with the, the mental health, uh, because there's just so many. Well, you can talk to Gary McDonald, he'll tell you the stories, but um, uh, like I said, I'm here just whatever I can do to help. I, I know the business community has been kind of waiting for it. I got two or three emails last week. Say, hey, you've been talking about this, this grant program, where is it? Um, and I just said, well, the city, we're, we're still going through all the financial, you know, figuring it all out. So, um, again, if I can answer any questions. Um, but the one thing I will say is there is still a big part of this community, business community that's struggling financially. And um, you know, Elk Grove, what they did, I, I was really surprised that the criteria was based on like, like home-based businesses. They, they were doing just a flat five hundred dollar grant. I thought that was a little low, but that's what they did for the home base. And then they had some targeted businesses uh, based on their revenue. If their revenue was a thousand to a hundred thousand, they got a thirty-five hundred dollar grant. If their revenue is from a hundred to one million, they got seven thousand. And if it's from one million to three million, they got ten thousand five hundred. And then there's one other grant program they did with a little, little hi- um, higher than that, but anyways, more of a targeted sector. And they're handing out five thousand, ten thousand and fifteen thousand dollar grants. Um, real fast, the, on the last uh, CARES Act funding that we did with the county, you know, the chambers solely did that one point three million and Lincoln received one seventy-five, I believe, hundred seventy-five thousand. And we had eighty-three applications and we, we handed out seventy-five uh, grants. And they averaged about thirty-five hundred bucks. So, um, from fifteen hundred to thirty-five hundred. Um, but anyway, the, the city of Elk Grove really took a good, hard look at this. And um, you know, I'd be, like I said, more unhappy to uh, talk about, you know, um, what they're doing. But that's, it's, they just opened up the second round today. So with that, if there's any questions, um, again, I do have a proposal Mark and I were working on. The only piece out of it, I, I, we did one application for businesses, one for nonprofits. For example, nonprofits, um, we put in there, we didn't put the criteria of how much they can apply for, because I like the idea of being able to apply up to a certain amount, but they have to justify it and we have a committee that goes through that. Um, but they, we put on there on the application, uh, subject to your guys' approval is a grant amount cannot exceed, you know, ten percent of your gross, you know, revenue or whatever, you know, it's, um. But anyway, we have the outline. It worked well with the county program. And I think we can just maybe make several different grant programs and really get a good bang for our buck. But time is of the essence. So with that, Holly, I'll, I'll, I'll shut up for a while.
Oh, thanks, Tom. Um, so here's a question for you and then for the council. Tom, is it, it, would it be too short of a time for you to um, and that the council wanted to put input on it to throw out another survey or needs assessment this week? Um, so that we kind of have some more data by next um, council meeting on the twenty-second? Or would you need like another week and for us to tackle that on March eighth?
No, I can, I can do that probably tomorrow. I can, I can put it together. Um, and can get you guys all the uh, results. Um, the, the business community, and nonprofits actually responded pretty well. So uh, we can do that and um, it, it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, so then my next question is to the council, what, what would you, if he, if, if Tom helps us do that, what what do you want to see, what kind of questions or what kind of feedback would you, you like to do a needs assessment? Just their revenue loss or um, what their needs are at the moment? Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, well, I'm scratching my head and thinking here. Uh, uh, my first thought is, is Tom, do you have the ability to push beyond just the DLA and the chamber members uh, and go to the business community at large?
Uh, yeah, I was working with, I believe her name is Anna from the city. Um, she, she sent me a we did this several times with the county, so we can do, we we can send it out to all the businesses in Lincoln. Not, it's a little more trickier because we're gonna, you know, I know we want to include home-based business, so there's a lot.
That gets rougher. That gets rougher. I understand that. I I I guess in my mind, I'm I'm looking heavily at brick and mortar. You know, home base is an interesting area that I don't know that I've focused a great deal on. But I'm I'm open to exploring that. Um, so just off the top of my head. If we're saying that that these dollars are intended to mitigate the impacts of COVID. I I guess I kind of want to know what the impacts of COVID are on the business. You know, and the financial impacts are, and I I guess I have a cautionary tale in this. Uh, when I first came on the council, a local business uh that was I thought doing very well, had an issue over an invoice the city had sent. I managed to get that invoice waived. That was about twenty thousand dollars, if memory serves. And that business shut down within a month. So what I'd hate to do is throw a big chunk of money at an at-risk business that isn't going to help them survive. And and just have them close within a short period of time. So I don't know how we how we touch on that. I'd I'd almost rather help stabilize them than throw a chunk of money at them only to discover that it really wasn't of any substantial assistance in keeping them open.
And we did have one local business uh do that with a fifty thousand dollar grant from the county, by the way. And they shut down immediately after that. So believe me, that's on the top top of my mind.
Yeah, so how do we put a mechanism in here that that I don't know that you do. If they're shutting down, they're probably filing for bankruptcy and
I I think that it's safe to say, Councilmember, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Joyner, that um there there is certainly that possibility. Tom has shared the evaluation criteria that he's put together. And it's pretty good. I think that, you know, that my recommendation is going to be that, you know, uh you set up it truly, usually it's best to maybe partner with a couple chamber people and a and a couple of staff people that have basically your evaluation committee. And um if they have questions about, you know, the health of a business, it it's certainly appropriate to be bouncing that application back to the the applicant and said, hey, you know, can you provide us a little bit more about how you're doing, you know, what's your five-year plan? Um, and drill down at least enough to feel fairly comfortable that while that may happen, we can minimize it to the greatest extent.
And I also, I think, I think most of us, well, I should say, on our side. We know some of the businesses are truly teetering right now and we could be very cautious with that. And I had no problem disclosing if we get applications, um because there is a, we can create a matrix. And uh, you know, we 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 uh, you know, the criteria that we look at. It 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 did work really well. I can't think of one business at on the other program we did that that shut down or or just kind of took the money and ran. I just think of the one that did, a different program that was not cool. Boy.
No, not cool at all. So let me say this, I I I love the notion of, and I can make the nexus of helping some of these businesses open up uh patios, outdoor dining spaces, potentially parklets, that type of thing, um that would allow them to continue to do business. In the eventuality, we get shut down again. So I'm I'm open to that. I'm open to creativity in in uh, you know, whether it's facade grants or or whatever else. Might help those businesses along. I'm I'm absolutely open to those. Uh, I just want to make sure we're getting the biggest bang for our buck.
Yeah, I just had, I just had a business call me last week that's getting that wants to replace their facade at thirty thousand dollars. And and they were like, didn't you say there's a grant program coming down the road? I said, yes, it's it's coming, but we're not, we're still not there yet. So there are some pretty good examples out there that people, even if it's in a matching grant fund, we take a part of the money, higher dollar part and make it matching. They got to put up fifty grand, we give them fifty grand. It's, you know, I mean, that's one way we can go on a certain amount of the of the funds and get the biggest bang for our buck. But um, but I think we we can do that needs assessment. I can get it, I can get it to you within a day or two. And you guys, Holly, Sean, Christine can look at it and let me know and then we can push the button and get it up.
Yeah, Tom, if council's okay with this, it might just be easiest for us to agendize the agreement with the chamber as well as um, you know, to administer the program as well as the evaluation criteria that you've already put together. And then by the time it gets to council, you know, I guess that would be the what, March third or, yeah, March third meeting? You'll have any info you need on a needs assessment. That way council can just sort of hash it out there, approve, hopefully approve, you know, the program, we can open it.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Alyssa, I did, I do see your hand. Go ahead. I was just waiting for Tom to finish. Go ahead.
I just wanted to, I have maybe an unpopular opinion on that discussion that maybe I shouldn't even be saying while recorded, but I feel like this, you know, money, their taxpayer dollars that we have to spend in our community that were accumulated on the back of these business owners who lost everything because of really dysfunctional government policies. And initially, the grants that we would have put out to them would have had to have a direct nexus to revenue loss. I have zero maybe not zero, but very few issues with putting money out to a business as revenue replacement. And then they don't make it. Okay, they're still in our community. There's still families and residents of our community who have suffered greatly. So if the confines that we put around it are so constrained where it is showing a direct revenue loss from COVID. And that's how they're being able to receive that revenue loss funding. And then they do their best and then they close. Okay. These are taxpayer dollars from them, from being contributors to our economy. I don't, it doesn't bother me. Actual intent of the money. Hold on a bit. The the intent of the money wasn't beautification of storefronts. It's let's help people who have been severely impacted by COVID. I don't have a problem with with beautifying storefronts since we have flexibility. If we're going to use that unrestricted fund portion, but if we're not, the money is to help people who suffered. I don't have a problem with it.
Well, and like I said, there's only one business that I know of that shut their doors, that's receiving grant funds. So that was out of, you know.
And my guess is it broke their heart more than it upsets us that they did that.
Yeah.
That's someone's entire, like, you know, Tom, you're a former business owner. You pour your heart and soul into those when you own a business. If they had to take the money and they had to shut, that probably hurt them more than it hurt anyone else.
Oh, trust me, my the four hundred members here, it's like being a bartender every week. You know, I get calls and the stories and the emails and it's crazy. It's really crazy. The stories you you get from these people and it's so sad. It breaks my heart. My wife's like, why are you so depressed? I'm like, trust me.
I don't have any problem. If if we're going to put together a grant program for businesses, we have enough money. And the entire purpose of it was to help those who struggled from COVID. I think that we should honor that.
That's a good point. So let's go out um to see if there's anybody else in the public who has comment on this. I know Evan has his hand raised, but I think he's wanting to, he's waiting to speak about fire, but we can, we can ask, Glenn, is there anybody else who has their hand raised?
Yes, uh Dre, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, hi Dre, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good.
Um, my name's Dreana Bravo and I'm the Director of the Foundry Youth Center. Um, it's a nonprofit in downtown Lincoln. And I had a question about the needs assessments for nonprofits. If you were only going to go through the Lincoln Community Foundation for the nonprofits they see as having needs? Or if there'd be a way for us to, you know, give an email or some way to make sure that um our needs are assessed as well?
That's a really good question. Um, my initial answer would be that we would want to see your personal response. And so I think the Lincoln Community Foundation is just wanting to help facilitate that. It's uh it's still up to council's approval, so it's not that the the Lincoln Community Foundation is making decisions, they're just helping us facilitate that. So we would definitely want to see.
Was that our intent or was our intent to to go through them and allow them to to run the program?
Well, so, yeah, okay, Sean, maybe you can clarify. I mean, they're going to help us facilitate it. But it, but all of it is still up to our our.
I think Holly's point is, is that if they were going to run the program for us, we would still, much like the question you asked, Tom. If you have access to the broader business community on your need assessment.
Yeah.
Lincoln Community Foundation would need to be reaching out to all nonprofits. So whatever needs Dre has. Lincoln Community Foundation would need to be facilitating that input prior to making any decisions.
And I agree with that, but what I heard was that the council was going to have to approve the final allocations to those not-for-profits. And that was not my understanding.
Yeah, and I would very, very, very strongly recommend against that. I think you want, you want a, you want a a a clinical process. So there's nobody saying, hey, I I knew a council member and so I got.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure. Yes, I agree with that. Yeah. Yeah.
And can I say some, can I just say one more thing?
Hold on, Tom, real quick, hold on. Dre, does that answer your question?
Can you still hear me?
Yes, does that answer your question?
Um, yes and no, because I know um I've been talking to Lincoln Community Foundation, so I know that I would be take, we would be taken in consideration. I just worry about if there's nonprofits, like, we just barely started making communication with them. So I just would hate for some nonprofits to fall through the cracks.
We have a pretty extensive, I mean, w- we pretty much know all the nonprofits. And that's one reason when I was talking with Mark Scott about this, um I said, you know, you guys were talking about having the chamber do this. I said, well, I I feel more comfortable is partnering with a nonprofit that wasn't going to apply for grant funding. And work together with them. And that's, that's what we basically have been doing. That's why we had the applications ready. And uh so like you said, we're just, I'm I'm steering the ship, but we have, the the Lincoln Community Foundation is is more willing to, again, uh do the assessment with us, you know, yeah, I don't, I think we have it pretty well worked out. Um, and I can give you a report or how we're going to do it, whatever you want. But but they're just in the mix. Um, because like I said, they know the nonprofits, that's what they do. And um, we're not going to leave anyone out. That's the whole point of getting them involved. Um, is so we don't leave anyone out, big or small.
My only concern that just got raised is, I know that you said, you know, we know the nonprofits. I would want to make sure that if we're deferring judgment, which I do believe we should to Sean's point, to a third-party entity to make those decisions, that the decisions are based on like some impartial grid or first come, first served or something where there is I don't want to be accused of favoritism, but I'll be damned if somebody else is accused of favoritism because I deferred judgment so that they could take the heat. Like, it needs to be a clinical assessment. It needs to be something that all organizations and entities that service our community or within our community are informed of, they're surveyed, they're eligible to apply, and they have an equal and fair chance at the funds. And so that would be my my priorities.
Yep. Good point. Okay.
So.
Go ahead, Paul.
I largely agree with that, but that's in direct conflict with your perception of how to do funds for the businesses. Which was.
It's not. It's all based on what our criteria is. So if our business criteria says you are eligible under X, Y, Z, and one of them is direct loss of revenue due to COVID nineteen protocols, funding, whatever, and they can show and substantiate their funds, which was the criteria for the last year plus. So businesses have been doing this, then they're eligible under that. If they're wanting to however we structure it, it just needs to be sterile. So that's my point, is that there has to be a sterile criteria. And then whoever is however it's formatted is how it's formatted, so that everyone knows there's an even playing.
Yeah.
Agreed.
All right, any other public comment, Ms. Gallin?
Uh, so Mr. Endriari has his hand raised again.
Go ahead, Tom.
Were you needing to speak again?
Well, yeah, I was just, I was just going to say that in the in the the grant proposal, we we have a matrix in there that that you have an eligibility, like, like, for instance, for instance, you must, you know, must business applying, must be physically located within the city of Lincoln. Businesses must have been business before March first, two thousand twenty. We have a whole list that you guys can go over and approve or or disapprove. And then we have a matrix and in the business portion, we actually had a matrix of of this is last year, of course, when the restaurants and hospitality were hit the hardest and salons. So we actually had a matrix. If we had too many applications or not enough funding, we could set aside those applications. Then we, again, we funded seventy-five out of eighty-three. So those eight applications were basically home-based businesses that the county didn't want to wasn't, didn't want to fund. Because they were, they were usually giving us their mortgage payment and they run their business out of the house and they wanted five thousand dollars and and those are the ones we didn't fund. But we were, they were clearly in the bottom of the matrix. They gave us, to Jennifer, you know, Hanson and I did this along with Pam. And um it was a pretty clear cut, looking at the applications. They attested to what they 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 signed off on. And we just went through them and uh had a simple matrix to go through. So I think if we can create that to to your, you know, suffice, so your to your approval, then I think it's home free. I mean, there might be a few. We had to do uh, you know, do some research on it. Like Sean said, there's nothing unappropriate of asking them to give us more data. So that that's kind of the way we did it before, and that's how it's structured now. You just have to look at, if you feel it's okay. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So um i- if the council has more questions or comments, that's fine. But um Sean, so if Tom go goes ahead and puts out this survey and needs assessment and he gets going on that this week, were you saying a minute ago that we could get it scheduled for the March, March um first workshop? Or can we get it on the agenda for the February twenty-second? What what were you saying about that?
I don't think, I often talk about with Glenn, I don't think I have enough time to get it on for the twenty-second.
That's fine, yeah.
But I could, you know, we'll get it on for the first available meeting after that. And it'll be to you fully baked. And if you decide you want to make some tweaks and changes, great. But the idea being that we hopefully get your approval and it gets executed immediately and Tom hits the streets. Because his point is well-taken, which is that, you know, we really could go through and debate this for a really long time. Um, but you know, the the need is now.
The need is now. Yeah, I agree. Okay.
Uh, can I just ask one quick question, Mayor, so that I have on, I'm making notes here. So the twenty percent, fully understand. And then um I think Councilmember I believe it was Joyner mentioned that the council had previously discussed basically a ninety-ten split, ninety percent of that.
That was, that was Dan. Carlos can compromise. His understanding was that we would do ninety uh percent business and ten percent nonprofit. Is that what you're saying, Dan?
I expected something like that.
Okay, okay.
Never got.
We never got, okay.
Because that would be great if you could come to some sort of collective concurrence on that right now. That'd be really helpful. That's one point eight million dollars for business and two hundred thousand dollars for nonprofits, just in case you want to know the math.
So eighty, twenty, fifty, fifty, what, Alyssa, what what are you thinking?
I think we need to have a more robust discussion because I feel like we could use these funds or some of these funds on homelessness intervention. Paul and I have been on that task force. We're talking, we don't want this big regional super center. So what does that look like for our community and what other mitigation measures are we willing to bring? Well, we can spend this funding on something like that. So let's not just give it all away because we have it. I kind of feel like we we need to spend it because to Tom's point, our businesses are hurting now. So let's figure out what percentage we're going to put towards our businesses and get that out the door. But we don't need to be like my ten-year-old who every time he's got like a hundred bucks for his birthday in his pocket, it's gone the next week. And those Legos are cool, but you know, then he finds a cooler set the week after that and he's bummed about it. So I just feel like we could use it on a bunch of things, like we could um put it towards mental health, which again, I'm going to keep beating that drum, maybe because I'm the mother of three young children and I see all of the kids and a lot of, a lot of them are really, really struggling. And we have um a significant amount of youth in our community who don't have access to regular healthcare. It would be great if we could provide, you know, uh funding for them to be able to have access to a therapist or whatever, or family services. Um, but there are other uses for those nonprofit dollars. So I would hate to restrict it to such a small. And I don't think it means the lighthouse. No offense to the lighthouse. I think the lighthouse is great, but there are other nonprofits in our community who are also doing things who might Who might have proposals in this space, so I think we want to think very broadly and inclusively. Um, in my mind, it's it's not fifty-fifty, I think our businesses deserve more than a fifty percent split, but I don't think that they should get ninety percent. So I don't even know that they get eighty percent.
So seventy-five, twenty-five? As a.
I'd be like, I'm like thinking, I don't, I might think it depends what we want to do. Do we, do we want to divert any of it? Can we use, is it enough to do something useful in those other spaces? I, I, I think that the discussions we need to to entertain. Paul, you look like you're chewing on something you want to say, so spit it out.
Um, well. I think we recognize the urgency within the business community, and we want to get that program rolling out fast.
Correct.
What what I'm doing is is I'm watching as we play that. That game again of trying to come up with percentages that aren't attached to a needs assessment. And and that makes me uncomfortable. I I I want to be able to address the needs that exist first and foremost. And then if there's more beyond that that we can do, uh, I'm willing to listen to that. But but when I'm just randomly hearing percentages, it's, it feels like a slider to me.
No, you're, what you're hearing is priorities.
Yeah, right.
Any, in, in.
But attached to what, Dan? Attached to what?
There is between mental health and homelessness. There is more than a one-point-eight million dollar need in Lincoln. That's the whole twenty percent. Probably, probably, there is more than a one-point-eight million dollar need. For businesses, particularly if they include. Uh, COVID eyes, uh, protection for the future. Which are things like, uh, grant programs, share, uh, sharing grant programs to put in outdoor. Okay, I'm saying that we only have ten million dollars. It was a pretty good decision, pretty easy decision to say. Our priority is eighty percent. To the city general fund to cover a myriad. Of shortfalls. Twenty percent to these other two communities. No, we, I didn't hear any dissension or any discussion. I mean, we had some discussion. The first time we talked about it, but it stayed twenty-eighty. Now, we're talking about splitting up to twenty. And, um. A need, if you did, did needs equ.
I, I think what you're saying.
Both of them. You know.
We're not gonna be able to, we're not gonna be able to give Sean a real answer until we do the needs assessment, so. I mean, I think that's kind of what.
Well, yes and no, but I think Dan's point was, we're also prioritizing the funds, right? We're going to do a needs assessment, and we're going to find out that the need is far exceeding two million dollars in mental health. And far exceeding two million dollars in homelessness. We don't know what it is in business, but we even know that we're going to. Put together to aside a significant chunk, because that can also hopefully go future forward, and we're not completely out of this yet. Right? And there's some other things that we've been wanting to do that this could be spent on, like the downtown general plan. That's something I think we should talk about. Um, I think that was your point, right, Dan, that like, yes, we need a needs assessment, but also right now, we can just prioritize with what we want to weigh heavier.
We're setting, if you will, setting policy.
Yep.
Right.
That's gonna.
You know, we can always do something, um, you know. First call kind of thing where, you know, you have multiple rounds, because presumably you're you're. At at least fifty percent of that funding, you know, it sounds like wi- will and should go to business. So you can refine that number as we keep talking this through. In the meantime, when we bring you the evaluation criteria, by then we'll have some sense of the need assessment, and in in meeting, you can determine. Okay, let's put, um, you know, one-point-two million dollars towards this, or whatever that.
So for me, also, Sean, that that breakdown is very dependent on what this program looks like. Are we doing a business program that covers beautification and everything else? Because if so, that's coming from our unrestricted general fund dollars. Are we doing one that is related to all of the ARPA nexus, in which so that's the one-point-eight million dollars? Like, where are we taking it from? Are we intentionally taking it from our flexible funds and then using the one-point-eight to backfill infrastructure? Because we know we can. Okay, so if they're the flexible funds, what if we just provisionally to start with said. Let's create a business program based off of fifty percent as a first tranche, and we'll do the needs assessment as we go. If we need to do a second tranche, then we can decide what additional percentage of that remaining fifty percent goes to business. And that's when we can make the decision on the final split between nonprofit and business, since we're not trying to get the nonprofit out of the door right now, because we need. A lot more discussion around what that looks like. Obviously, don't want to hold off too long, but like, we could do a follow-up workshop on that. And then we might have the needs assessment information back and second tranche of funds and have that final determination. Would that work for everyone?
I can live with that.
Yes, that would be fine.
Why don't we do that?
Okay.
Love this.
Okay, great, Sean.
Clear direction.
Awesome, thank you. All right, so let's, if that's okay with everybody, thank you, Alyssa, for that, I really appreciate it. Let's, let's move on to the discussion about fire. So Sean, you want to start that off, or should we just?
Discussion about fire.
Oh, moving to.
We're gonna move on to the safer grant for a program.
Discussion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so just so everybody kind of understands, because I think council and I have all talked about this individually, but just so the community understands. Um, uh, my predecessor, Mark Scott, had a really great idea, um, which is why he's Mark Scott. And it was that, um, so we didn't get a safer grant. Um, but he had an idea that what we perhaps do instead is we use some of this unrestricted mon- unrestricted money. And self-fund a safer grant to bring on, um, a number of more firefighters into that department. To sort of help right-size the, the, you know, serious staffing deficiency. And hopefully, as would be the same with a safer grant, by the time that that funding sort of runs out. Most of your new tax sharing agreements will have helped hopefully picked up the the burden of that uh, salary. Or your general financial outlook is improving, and so you can afford it anyway. Um, but essentially just sort of self-fund a grant, and the one comment, which is really great. Um, was, hey, that's concerning though, because we have to use this money in these tax sharing agreements for safety. Uh, and so we don't want to be paying for something that we should be spending this tax revenue on. And so I think that what we had discussed was setting it up sort of as a match, and it'll take a little bit of of, you know. Uh, true it up probably towards the end of every year, but it gives us the ability to basically use every last dollar we're getting on that new tax sharing agreement. And then fund the remainder of the salary and benefits from from ARPA for a few period, a few years. So, um, that's the concept, and I have, I'm gonna fully put together sort of a model of how I think it could work for the council to consider. But I just want to be sure that this is the road we want to walk down before I put my self out there.
Right, thank you. So, um, would it be okay with the council before we start discussing? If I let Captain Fattis share what he would like to share, and then we can discuss it, is that okay with you guys?
Fine.
Okay.
That works.
Okay, Evan, go a- go ahead and uh, unmute yourself and um, and share with us your thoughts, please.
Okay, thank you so much. So hello, my name is Evan Fattis, and I am the Lincoln Unit Rep under Sacramento Firefighters Local five-two-two. I am also a fire captain with the Lincoln Fire Department. We are asking you today to consider using the ARPA funds to help staff the fire department, which is so desperately needed. This funding is directly correlated with COVID nineteen. Here are some highlights why a portion of the ARPA funds should be directed to. Increase the fire department service to the community. From March twenty-twenty through today, the fire department has been on the front lines. Of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Responding to COVID nineteen related calls is a near daily occurrence for our engine companies. Being on the front lines of the pandemic and the constant contact with patients that are at the height of their illness. Has led to illness among staff in the closure of fire stations on a periodic basis due to our inadequate staffing. Just want to give you a quick history of our staffing. Um, in two thousand eleven, we reduced our fire engine staffing. From three personnel down to two personnel, which is far below the National Fire Protection Association seventeen-ten recommendation. Staffing levels of four firefighters per engine. This reduction improved our response times because we opened a closed fire station. But it increased the amount of time to assemble enough personnel at the scene to adequately mitigate the emergency. The city has tried to increase funding for public safety over, over the last several years through several avenues. First was Measure K, a utility tax that would increase our general fund, but it was not approved by voters. In two thousand twenty, we applied for the safer grant, but were unsuccessful. In two thousand twenty-one, we applied for the safer grant yet again, and again, we were unsuccessful. In two thousand twenty-one, the city secured a new tax sharing agreement for the public safety, but unfortunately, our three firefighter positions were cut from the budget. Our population continues to grow, and our call volume has nearly increased one hundred percent since two thousand eleven. This has resulted in an increase in job-related injuries with one fire captain out with a long-term back injury. In closing, our fire department needs to grow to meet the needs of our community. The average age of our fire department is forty-five years old. In the next ten years, the department will have nearly one hundred percent turnover of our personnel. That's a combined two hundred and forty years of experience serving the citizens of Lincoln that will be lost with limited time to pass that knowledge on. To the next generation of firefighters. We have a chance to fund our own safer grant for the next few years. And it will give us time to research and allocate funds to continue to fund these firefighter positions. Hiring of these new positions would get us closer to the city's recent goal of point-six-six firefighters per one thousand residents. We currently stand at point-four firefighters per one thousand residents. Thank you for your consideration in the use of these funds, and if you have any questions, I can go ahead and answer for you, and I do have some. Um, numbers as far as cost and salary and um, how much that would be if if somebody else could answer, so.
All right, thank you, Captain Fattis, really appreciate that, and hanging here with us, um, in this conversation. All right, so let's go to the council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Joyner, questions, comments?
Uh, no questions, really a comment. Evan, I don't think you need to sell any of us on on this notion. I think we are all. Uh, behind it conceptually, and if we can pull it off, my suspicion is it's going to be a unanimous uh, decision. Um, it's, I guess I do have a minor question. How do we let those new hires know? That their job is dependent upon those. One-time revenues, if you will, um, and it's. It is potential, just as it would be with the safer grant, that at the end of a three-year period or whatever period we decide upon. Those funds will not be available to continue their job. Do you, within the contract, do you let them know that so that they're aware? How do you address that?
Uh, Councilmember Joyner, that would be an HR and legal issue that I wouldn't expect. Evan to really have a solid answer on. That's something that we'll have to handle internally as executive staff.
Yeah, but I would just, I I would want those individuals hired under the program to know that there is that risk. Um, and but that we'll be doing everything we can to mitigate that risk, obviously.
Yeah, and and I think that's totally fair. They're they're under the COPS program, which is very similar to safer, you know. Uh, these are, uh, this, these kinds of programs where, you know, y- you potentially should have to keep them on board afterwards. Um, but I I I think that's an easy conversation, and frankly, you know, we're, we're gonna make it this high of a priority, we'll find a way to make it work. And 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 incidentally as well, I don't think it does us any good to overstaff, and by that I mean. Be super aggressive in this, in this safer grant idea. If we know for, like, for example, there's no way we're going to be able to hire twenty firefighters and keep twenty on. Board in three years, right? So I'll bring you some kind of financial modeling on what I.
Right.
I I think the goal right now is nine, so I think that's a moderate issue for. Go ahead, Dan.
Well, what was this, I keep hearing safer grant. And it's been reported out thirty times over the course of the last couple of years. How many people was it for? What was it for? I know it was to, it's a three-year plan. Where the government, where the rest of the state, uh, fire marshal, I guess, pays their salary for three years. Then there are, that's fine. What did we ask for?
It was for, it was for eighteen, eighteen staff.
We asked for different ones both times.
Yeah, so the.
They weren't always the same.
The first time it was less, and then wh- when they did some more work this last year, it was eighteen plus. Equipment and training. Go ahead, Evan, you can speak to this a little bit better, go ahead.
So yeah, so the first time we applied, we asked for nine positions, so nine firefighters. Um, we were unsuccessful, so we looked into greater detail of why we were turned down. And so as I referenced, the National Fire Protection Association seventeen-ten, that recommendation is for four personnel per fire engine. And that's the goal of set, or that's the goal of the safer grant, is to get every uh, fire engine to that um, goal of four firefighters. So when we asked for nine positions the first time, that was only going to get us to three personnel per engine. So the second time, to increase our chances, we asked for nine additional, so for a total of eighteen. Hoping that would increase our chances and get us that much closer to reaching that NFP A seventeen-ten, but both times we were turned down, so.
The, um. Three, not, uh, to add, we have three stations, we have an engine each station or a truck, whatever you call them. To.
Apparatus.
We, uh, apparatus, right. To man that three people, we have to add a person per shift. And we run three shifts, there's A, B, C, um, whatever it is. So that's nine people. That is no. Um, uh, no backup, no, if somebody goes on sick leave. You're not at three people per station. And also. We need twelve people, yeah, to meet the. Uh, the general plan requirement of whatever it was. I can't remember, six-point-six people. With our current uh, population, we're short twelve people. With the intention be, to be, because the intention of the tax sharing agreement. Would be to get to the twelve people, no staffing for new residents. Okay. And I guess you could use twelve people, even though they're correctly divisible by three shifts, three times and three stations. Anyway. So. The, and the safer grant was for three years. So we need to know if we're going to do this sharing, I I do agreement. That the, the self-funded safer sharing plan. The John Sculley Self-funded Savings Plan, or S four. The, um. We need to know what the increase, what the revenue protections are on the tax sharing, because I don't think they're. Anywhere near, we're spending about two-hundred-and-sixty-three K per, per fireman. Uh, on this, in this year's budget.
Well, I I have some good news for you, um, that one of the, one of, I was actually pleasantly surprised. To s- to, I asked, um, uh, HR to run me some, um, costing on on what it would be to hire some new firefighters. And we're not talking, we we can ta- have a discussion about whether they want to be, we want to recruit for laterals, but let's just assume for the same sake of discussion, these are brand-new. Uh, region, recent academy grads even, um, are quite a bit less expensive. Because they're all coming in as pepper, um, folks, and. Um, it, so it's really not as expensive as I thought. In fact, I think that the number that she quoted me was around one-forty. Fully soaking wet with, you know, uh, benefits, which was quite lower than I thought. Benefits, which was quite lower than I thought. Um, so, so you could make a good dent. At that cost.
At that cost, you could, yes. It's half of what. But. You've also got, uh, capital costs for each person. Cause you don't want them fully wet.
Alright, thank you Dan. Alyssa, you have comments, questions?
Uh, no, I'm literally scrolling through the final guidelines right now, trying to figure out. When the funds have to be expended, even if we claim that off the top 10 million. Uh, revenue loss because I. I, I, I wanted this program to work, I want to do it, but I want to make sure we can actually use these funds for it. Um, so that's why my eyes have been looking down. If I find it, I'll let you know. Um, but I, I would love to find a way to do it along with that match requirement like we talked about at the council meeting so that we're appropriately backfilling with. The tax sharing agreement funds. But I want to make sure we can do it. I don't want to be so enthusiastic about a cool idea that we don't dot our i's and cross our t's and make sure that it's actually something that's feasible.
I agree.
Yep, alright, councilmember Lawrenceon?
I also agree, but, uh. You know, hopefully we can use these funds over a number of years. And that'll get us through to the, to a time when maybe we have enhanced, uh, as I said this before, enhanced, uh, uh, tax revenue. I, I, anyway, I'm all for, you know, uh, re-staffing up our, our fire department and if we can use this money for that purpose, that's good. Hopefully we can use it for more than, uh, two or three years. If, uh, what Sean is saying is true, that, you know, we can, you know, we can take that 10 million and then use it for a number of years. That's, that's, that's my hope.
It, um, just real quick, uh, even if. Uh, let's say that I'm totally wrong and this money has to be spent within the same timelines. Um, that, that date, you don't, you only have to have it obligated by December 31st of 2024. But you could continue to spend it until December 31st of 2026.
Yeah.
That's good.
We're okay now, either way.
I'm trying to see if my logic is right on this, Sean, but so. The 10 million, you know, that you can claim as revenue loss. Is still subject to all of the other guidelines. So there's no, you know, backfilling financial reserves, there's no putting it towards pensions, blah, blah, blah. Cause I, I just saw it says that all, all uses of these funds are held to those standards, right? And then there's certain restrictions based on what kind of entity you are. So we have certain ones that are on cities, that covers part of it. However, oh, and they're all subject to the timelines. That said, if we're claiming a 10 million revenue loss, can't we just then? Encumber that and expend it as a transfer to our general fund and we've now completed the transfer. And we report that back and now anything that we do with that money, we just do with that money. So I think, I think we're good. I think we do have to probably report it within that timeline as a revenue loss. Backfill. And that's what we report to the federal government. And then what we do with those funds is what we do with our general fund. That's what I'm, that's what I think.
That you, you might have missed that when you were in transition, but, but Sean actually explained that.
No, I heard him say that, but I just read through all of it and I think he's right.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, like, everything that's in there, we still. At the point that it's general funds, we could do what we want with it, but I just wanted, cause he said that he wasn't sure if, that's what he thought, but he couldn't find it. So I put a second set of i's on it and I think that exactly.
Thank you for that.
I think that's exactly right.
Yeah.
I agree with you, I guess, is what I was trying to say. I just went through it and I, I agree with what you were saying.
I feel he's thoroughly enjoyed hearing you say multiple times.
Sean was right, yeah, that's.
Well, it might not happen that often, so he might want to take like a screenshot or a small video, I don't know.
Good. Well, here's the other thing too, I think that, um. There's a really good chance that, um, if we do this. And the fire department applies for the safer grant at a later date again. That they have a better chance of getting it because. The, the feds will see us actually putting money towards it instead of just sitting back hoping that we get this money. If we can show that we're actually investing in it and we're making an effort. I think there's a better chance that we, we could get it next time, which would only help us down the road, you know, to, to, um, spread it out even farther. Now, of course, that's not a guarantee, but I think that's. And talking with different people, I think that's, um, one of the thought lines too, that, that, that might help us down the road, so.
Now, here in, into the road, if we need it next time. We done something wrong. Because our annexation agreements are set up to support the growth. That they cause. If we do this thing, it gets us in the case of fire. To the, to where we should have been all along.
Well, that's a good point.
And, and we can't forget. The obligation that of the tax sharing fund. It needs to be, it's public safety for both. Last year we knew, need, used it primarily for police because of the dispatch need. And this year we're gonna probably use it for fire, but, but all of the. All of the tax sharing. Increment. Goes to both police and fire.
Yeah.
Clarification, Dan. Dispatch serves both agencies.
Well, yeah.
And, and we also did authorize the hiring of a battalion chief. Um, while the focus was on PD for various reasons. There was an effort. To assist the fire department as well. And you're correct, the, the intention this time out. As the next budget comes around is to focus on, on fire personnel. So, but let's also remember that one of the obligations of the Village One. Tax sharing agreement is that a revenue measure be placed on the ballot for the citizens to, uh, to vote on somewhere down the road. Uh, it won't be that far away.
Well, and if the, again, if the citizens see us making an effort and putting money towards it. They'll be more likely to agree to a tax increase. Um, other than us just depending on them. So I think it's a win-win both ways. So. Um, let's go out to, um, public comment, see if anybody else has anything to say. Ms. Gallin, do we have any hands raised?
Uh, no mayor, no hands are raised.
Okay, alright, so let's bring it back to the council and so. Um, so what's our next step, Sean? Are we just giving you direction to go ahead and run the numbers and kind of put together a package for us to talk about it again and get this rolling? For us for to approve or not approve?
No, I don't, I don't need any further. I mean, I, I, I already knew that this was probably what the direction to go. This is more than enough. I'll, I'll basically give you a venue of at this many new firefighters, it's gonna cost this much over a three-year period. At, you know, and then I'll, um, we'll do a little bit of work to try to figure out if we can do some more advanced projections of the. Of the new tax, uh, sharing arrangement and what we think that's going to, to bring in. But, you know, probably the way it works is how, what Dan just mentioned where. You know, as you, as that agreement matures, you're spending less of your ARPA dollars to fund those positions. And hopefully then the little bird flies on its own one day and we don't need.
What it, what in reality. S4 does. I like that. Is it allows us to preload. And to get the. How many ever people. Onboard immediately rather than one or two a year for in number of years. Which is really great. So we can have another group retire all at the same time, you know, 30 years now.
Okay.
So, so quick question, any, any thought about? Whether to price firefighter paramedics within this as well? Whether we want to explore? Those options?
Oh, 100%.
Well. The other thing that you can do, if you remember every time. We've talked about fire, uh, paramedics. There's been two, uh. Two stumbling blocks. Uh, one is the, the getting people certified. Or hiring certified people. The other one is the cost of the equipment. We certainly could do. Uh, buy some. Ambulance or health EMS trucks. With this money. I'm not saying we have enough money to do it. We could buy the trucks. Hopefully, my ideas, well.
Well, I think.
And you could fund. Perfectly legally. You could fund the certificate, the paying for the certification. Of people to get paramedics into your.
So I'm just talking about as Sean runs the numbers, do we want, that is a breakout.
I think so, and also, um, not to keep piling on, but I also want to see the numbers for the type three truck that they had requested. And that was in the budget that got pulled last year, um, to see if that's something that's even feasible. But I think looking at the numbers for the paramedic, um, and that equipment is a, is a really great idea, Paul. I think that's something that. It would be helpful to know if it's, if we can do it or not.
The latest numbers, um, that I received from, uh, Chief Alves just the other day. On the type three engine, it looks like the, and this will be a budget request. Uh, we could talk about it within ARPA too if you want, but is for, for 77, $477,000.
Parent, last paramedic. The last EMS truck that I saw are about a quarter of a million. So it's two EMS trucks.
So you're talking about creating rescue units effectively, Dan? Two-man rescue units?
Yeah. Well, doing all the medical calls and small equipment.
I understand, I, I, I've often thought that that is a solution, given the fact that. A majority of our calls are medical in nature. Um, but then the, the halfway step is a firefighter paramedic on each apparatus.
Well.
And Evan's probably pulling his hair out here, trying to, to figure out where we're headed with this. I just, I just want to know the numbers and what our options are.
Yep, I would agree with that. Alright, okay. Any other comments about funding fire, the ARPA money? Are we all good? And Sean's got his direction, okay? Alright, so, um, item number five, any council-initiated business? Does anybody have anything they want to share?
So are we saying that that entire 10 million is gonna go to fire?
No.
But because we're gonna have the infrastructure.
Yeah. So, oh, are we gonna have that conversation right now or are we gonna hold that off for?
I think, I think you had discussed holding, holding on that one for now. We're gonna need to come back to you a few more times to really fully form this and refine and refine and refine.
Yeah.
Um, so, and I know these are hard conversations because it's just such an unusual situation, you know, but, uh.
Did I miss it? How much are we talking for this safer grant program total?
I, I haven't attributed a number to it, but to give you a rough, a rough idea for a three-year term. You, you could, it was, it's gonna be in the two to 2.2 million range. Um, if you're thinking about nine positions. Um, so I'm gonna basically come to you with, okay, here's what three looks like, here's what six looks like, here's what nine looks like, here's what 12 looks like. And here's what your paramedic training and recruitment looks like. And then you could choose what you think is, and we could start small and. Build our way up, so I think, uh.
Approximately 20% of all of our funds, so it would be about 20% business and nonprofit, 20% public safety. And then the remaining 60% infrastructure. I, I feel like that tracks. Dan, what do you, does that? I mean, it's still 80%. Fund essential services, but it's, it would be about 20% of our overall funds towards public safety, but we talk all the time about prioritizing public safety, so I feel like. That's.
Yeah. No, at, at, at that level is fine. I'm just going through the complexities. Of what are the, there's a lot of variables to make it work properly.
Correct, and it would need to, it's a lot of money to throw at something if it's just gonna throw it at it. To make us feel good or to make somebody else feel good or to, for optics. I don't want to, I don't want to play that game. I would like to do something meaningful though.
Right.
Okay, alright, um, thank you all for that, um, great conversation. Any council-initiated business? Paul?
You know, I thought I had something that I could slip under council-initiated business, but it appears I didn't write a note when it popped into my mind, so no.
Okay. Dan?
No.
Alyssa? Bill?
No.
No? Okay, alright, well, thank you everybody. Um, it is 5:44 and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Sean, thanks Evan, thank, thank you guys, appreciate it.